I think I'll call the January 22, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. Could you call the roll, Ms. Rambo?
Jay Castile. Jim Jackson.
Here.
Pete Magori.
Here.
David Miller.
Here.
Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whalen.
Here.
Mike Zuloff.
Do we need to excuse Mr. Zuloff and Ms. Castile since they called?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe so. I think they're excused without us calling it to order.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. The second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, the December 4, 2024 minutes, and also the December 16, 2024 minutes. And Mr. Hastings, can we pass a motion to pass both of these or shall we take them separate?
This case should take them separately because one of them needs to be amended.
Okay. So we'll start with the December 4, 2024 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move they be approved as amended.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I will say I did appreciate you putting those notes in the minutes to identify those changes, and you bolded that language, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the December 16, 2024 minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move they be approved as distributed.
It's been moved by Mr. Miller. Seconded by Mr. Magori. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Number three, election of officers. Is there nominations from around the table? Mr. Magori.
I would move to reelect yourself and Vice Chair Miller to the same position you now hold for the coming year, for this year 2025.
It's been moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Good choice. I think you need to bang the gavel after some.
Do we need a voice vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Should probably ask for a confirmation.
Yes, are there any other nominations from the floor? Or are they around the table? If not, Ms. Rambo, would you please call the roll?
Connor Whalen.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Dave Miller.
Yes.
Pete Magori.
Yes.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, the new slate is same as the old slate, and by the way, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year since this is our first meeting of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move into the public hearing, 1706 Hays Ave Zone Map Amendment. Mr. Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site is currently zoned LM Limited Manufacturing. The proposed zoning for this site is going to be PF Public Facilities. The adjacent zoning to the north is LM Limited Manufacturing. To the east is LM Limited Manufacturing. To the south is R-140 Single Family Residential and also PF Public Facilities. And to the west is R-140 Single Family Residential and also CS Commercial Services. The existing use of the site is currently vacant. It was once the American Crayon site. Proposed use of the site is going to be a community recreation center. This site is approximately 6.25 acres and has a total building coverage of 0%. The lot is owned by the city of Sandusky currently, and the site is for the future community recreation center and tennis courts. The current zoning, limited manufacturing, does not allow any civic or public uses such as a recreation center as a main use. Planning recommended, excuse me, the Planning Commission recommended staff to bring forward this zoning change in order to enable the creation of the recreation center at the site. The design process is underway for the facilities. Staff has determined that rezoning to public facilities is appropriate at 1706 Hays Ave and is in line with current and predicted trends. The demand for manufacturing zoning in the city has declined with increasing demand for public recreation. The Bicentennial Vision and Comprehensive Plan outlines a number of priorities for the South District, which this is located, which are to develop the American Crayon site, to create Hays Ave streetscape and promote walkability, which includes landscaping, lighting, public art benches, bike rack, trash cans, et cetera, to enhance decision points at key intersections with landscaping and signage, and to consider centrally locating a rec center which serves all residents in replace of the YMCA. Staff has examined this comprehensive plan as it relates to this area and suggests this rezoning could offer great potential towards increasing quality of life, adding more amenities, and helping to grow, helping to shape Sandusky as a vibrant city. Should the rezoning move forward, the site plan application will be on the Planning Commission agenda in the coming months. There were no concerns from any other city staff, and staff recommends approval of the proposed Zone Map Amendment at 1706 Hays Ave with the following conditions: that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency at the appropriate time of construction and operations of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. I see Mr. Milling and Mr. Wherley are here. Did you want to comment on this particular item?
Thank you for having us. Chris Milling, Recreation Project Coordinator for the city of Sandusky.
Jason Wherling, Recreation Superintendent.
So we're here basically to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the site and the recreation facility. I do have a conceptual design, conceptual design that I want to share with you of what the site might look like and the amenities that may be on that location. Thanks, Jason. You'll see in this first phone board, the facility, recreation facility located up here in the left-hand corner, and then we're showing three tennis courts up in the top northeast corner. That's actually going to be six tennis courts. The Sandusky School Systems will be holding their matches for both the boys and girls tennis teams over there once those tennis courts are constructed and ready for use. The bid for those will go out hopefully in the next two weeks, two to three weeks, with the plan of the tennis courts being ready in July for their coming fall or girls' tennis season. And then the facility that you see up here in the corner with the concept designs there, that's an approximately 36,000 square foot facility, and there are, the plans are to, we currently, excuse me, we currently signed a contract with Schmidt Architect to get us to about 20% design, and then approximately at the end of March and mid-April, we'll send that out to proposals for bid for a design builder to complete the project that you see here, conceptual drawings that you see here. So any questions that you may have?
I'll jump in to mention that the site plan, well, you will see the site plan for this site once it gets beyond the concept level. They're just not quite ready for, to bring it to a planning commission yet.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Do I presume correctly that on the slide, the red bounded area is what is represented on the, on the schematic on the left? So the tennis courts and all would be within that red bounded area. I'm curious about the property that would still be then local manufacturing that's to the east of that. Given that it looks like there's residential lots covering much of that street frontage, either you have like a keyhole to get back to that other property, or I'm not, I know it's beyond the scope of this, but I'm concerned about that, that sort of stranded parcel there, and does the city own that, and is there a plan for that?
You're referring to the manufacturer over here to the east?
Yes.
We do not own that facility. We have had conversations with the owners, and they're aware of the project. In our conceptual design for the, for the tennis courts, yeah, there's a drive, this is their driveway here. I know it's hard to see, but we plan on putting a sidewalk in from Rockwell all the way up on the property line to go up to the tennis court so that both the tennis players, parents, and those spectators that come out will have safe access to the tennis courts while the construction goes on for the recreation facility.
And there would still be a 50-foot wide or something access point off that road to get to that property back there, I mean, behind the houses?
Absolutely. When we had conversation with them, one of the things they wanted to make sure for sure is they still had access for their semi ice to come in off of Route 4 and go down Rockwell so they have access to it. So yes, they will.
Any other questions, comments? I have one. I see we have fencing and screening there. Is that along the railroad tracks? Will that go around the entire property? I know there was, one of the objections was being so close to the tracks. It's good that there is a provision there to keep people from laundering out of those tracks. Would that go around the property, or would that just be along those tracks?
So we're still having conversations on that, in regards to that, but initially, yes, we'd like to have it on at least three sides of the property.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in favor of this, this application that would like to come up and speak? If not, is there anyone opposed that would like to come up and speak? Mr. Poole, I always appreciate a guest appearance.
Wes Poole, 1939 East Olgate. As usual, you've narrowed the options to either being opposed or for, but I'm neither. I'd simply like to include some information for you people to think.
I'll remember that next.
It's okay. It's just, that's just fine. I did have, I suppose, I got, when you add extra information in there, you have to, you have to, then I come up with other questions. You guys can go back and ask since that's not part of my, what I do. I want you to consider, you're doing, this is being done based on the premise that there is a decline in manufacturing interest and that there's a growing enlarged interest in public facilities, public recreational facilities. I would suggest that you at least give some consideration of the fact that in the next four years, the country is going to be embark upon the most aggressive program to bring manufacturing back to this country that we've never seen. And the utilization of this property, that's all we're talking about. It's not about your rec center. You can move that picture anyplace in town. This particular piece of property is already, already light manufacturing, and you are closing off our opportunity for something that I think we need much more than a couple, more tennis courts. There's eight tennis courts behind the high school now, and that would be of the question to ask is, as we build more tennis courts, what are you doing with the other ones? So that's basically what I, what my premise is for you folks to think about. Is this the best use, use of this, this land? With regard to the premise that there's a demand for public facilities, I would suggest that the YMCA closing, the inability to get enough public support to rebuild the Y would indicate that there's not really a great demand for public recreational facilities of that nature. What we actually has happened, at the time when they built rec centers in the 70s and 80s, they filled the bill for something that didn't exist that does now. Okay? You didn't have Sports Force. You didn't have Planet Fitness. You didn't have skate parks. You didn't have all those things. Our community is smaller than it was in the 70s, and people's ideas of what they want to do at their time have changed. The concept of, we went from lifting weights in people's garages to the YMCA. Times have changed. We've moved from these big facilities like that to people are going to, to individualize private trainers. You just don't have the demand, the demand that you talk about does not exist in terms of how much it's going to cost to build the building, how much we lose in terms of the ability to put a man, put something there that will bring jobs to the community. That is, that is what I want you to just consider. You folks as a planning commission, your mandate or authority comes from the state of Ohio, citizens through the state, state law. And it was so important to have input into what planning is above and beyond what politicians, bureaucrats said. It requires a super majority to overrule whatever you say. It's not your job to say that the people that appointed me want this, so therefore I should close my eyes and say, well, it's going to be okay. Or make a vote, and I've been on this commission and heard from folks, and not you people personally, the concept, oh, well, if the commission doesn't like it, they can turn it down. Politicians make decisions based on how to keep, get reelected and the small group of people that they may represent, and then it's just a matter of selling it to the public. All I'd like you folks to do, if you think this is a great idea, let's hear words of how you think the use of this land benefits Sandusky in the fashion to which they're doing and what we will benefit from it that makes you come to the conclusion that I should vote yes, we're going to change this. I think perhaps we better off if we just held our water. This is a good site to put something on here that'll do some real good for us, and we can put these things anywhere you want. I could debate the efficacy of the tennis courts and things also, but it's really not your call. Your call is talking about the use of the land. So, and if putting a recreation facility there, I would say, I would ask you to ask them, who's going there? Who's going to quit doing all the things that Sports Force and the other facilities that are in the community that are private? Because that's what's happened. What was public facilities in the 70s and 80s are now done, broken down into private entities that are doing that. And if you, those folks aren't going to, aren't going to abandon where they are now, you're going to need a bunch of people to move to Sandusky to justify this kind of expense. We passed a, passed a law, passed a, we provided $650,000 in tax money for operations. If that money was being used on programming, for programs to kids in their neighborhoods every summer, and utilizing the schools that we have now for, you could do all kinds of things with that kind of money. $640,000 to pay off the light bill and so forth on a new building, we're already, we are already housed at Mills School for one, and other locations that kids are being taken care of. We should be expanding in this community, this, these folks should be reaching out to what is existing for taking care of kids and providing them experiences, partnering with them and saying, how can we enhance what, what the Boys and Girls Club's already doing rather than building another building? So my five minutes is probably up, but those are my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Poole?
Yes, you can ask me if you got anything, what I think.
Has there been any kind of study to see about the need of such a facility, or basically, you're saying that there's no need for the facility?
I would suggest that, that the indicators would suggest that there's not a demand, and if they say there's a demand, it's not a matter of taking a survey where people say, yeah, we don't mind doing this, or this might be nice. Even in fact, if you talk about the vote that just passed that raised their taxes, it was won by 110 votes, of which I think a small, when you consider 40% of the population voted on it, 49.51.0001% said yes. That's not a mandate. We have 24,000 people, all the people that didn't vote, even in the election, if you look at the folks that shows to just not vote on the issue, it's, it's an indicator of a lack of interest. And we have to ask ourselves, you should be asking, not you. Actually, it's at the next level. For you, this is truly about the use of the land. You either believe this is the best use for it, or you don't, and I can go with that. But in terms of a study, I don't have deep pockets for doing a study. And a random, they can tell you what they did, and you can evaluate it for what you, what you wish, but I would suggest that there's no indication that anything, people are doing anything except accepting what the politicians, what politically has been pushed forward and not fighting about it. Because folks just, they, they're too busy, working two and three jobs. The number of people in Sandusky has declined, and I would just, hey, in your own mind, you tell me, who's going there? Where are they coming from? What are they doing now? And can you make this run on what's left after all of the folks that are doing Planet Fitness and whatnot and all the other recreational opportunities that are around here? So no, I don't have to do a survey. Common sense tells me that. I know how many people are exercising.
No, I wasn't talking about a survey. I'm talking about someone that, that is study on it, not necessarily what the people want.
I don't think so. I didn't do a study. I don't know of anyone that did any kind of study. Have to ask the staff to tell you what they've got. I'm not, I'm not certain what kind of study, what kind of study were you suggesting?
Well, if there's someone that wants to build a hospital, they're going to, they're going, they're going, there's going to be people that are going to research the need for the hospital, and if they say, hey, we really need a hospital, then we'll, we'll go on with the project. What I'm saying is, is that, that, that study, whether or not...
These folks can tell you what they did for that, and you can evaluate the, whether or not you think it's sufficient to justify doing it. Yes, there was a survey done, some surveying and whatever it is the staff did. I would suggest when you count the numbers and look at, and look at what, what was said, that you come up with the idea of like, okay, it's easy enough to get people to say, gee, that would be nice, but now let's count heads. Who's going to go? And the YMCA closed because of just what I said. Culture changed. People are doing different things, different ways. They absorb their recre, they get their recreation in different manners, and the numbers and concentration are not existing to support this one building concept that's got a basketball court and tennis court. People are doing other things. So if my common sense doesn't make sense, and it's okay, you can disagree with me, but that's how I arrived at the conclusion. I recognize that nobody's down here filling the room telling you how great an idea it is. We haven't seen that at the city commission. What we have is documentation that from phone surveys or whatever it is that staff got that had, and the numbers are there, but it's nowhere near the kind of numbers that are needed to join and pay and patronize a rec center. If everybody that took the survey decided they were going to go to the rec center, you ain't got enough people to keep it running, which is why the Y died.
Mr. Magori.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I'm a little bit moved and intrigued by your thoughts here.
Thank you.
And just to refresh my memory, on this property, I mean, I think it started with demolition of American Crayon, and then we have a vacant lot, a big vacant lot, and then there was some talk about maybe putting the city building there, and then that didn't happen, and now we still have a big vacant lot. So I have two questions to anybody that might be able to answer, is, number one, I think the, the thought process is, well, let's try, try to figure out something to do with this lot. So who, who came up with the initial idea of maybe putting the, the recreation idea there? And has, has the city been contacted by any, any manufacturers or light manufacturers about any, any location anywhere in the city? And I'm asking a bunch of questions.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll try to remember.
And do, how much room do we have out in, I guess I'd call it the city industrial park out on the west side of town? So, but, but I understand what you're saying, and, and I kind of gut agree with two things. I kind of agree, is there enough of a demand to, to do this? And could we find, find a, a light manufacturer there for that location? Now, I, I don't know the, for sure, the answer to either of those, but I kind of would lean towards the manufacturer if, if we could find one, and even if we can't, I kind of agree, maybe there's not the full demand to justify the cost of this, so.
Okay. I'm old, and I can't remember everything, but let's, let me start with, how this started, I don't, how that came up, I don't know. I think it essentially, it may have come from staff. We were looking for a place, they were looking for a place to put in a recreation center long, and that's a vacant piece of property. So how it sprung into the conversation, I'm, I'm not sure it really matters. At some point politically, somebody decided that's where they wanted it to be, and commission members on either, that's, that's, and that's, it takes off a direction. These things just, because most of the public pays no attention, those people who most interested pretty much guide the conversation, and you look to whether or not you get a big enough force going the other direction. So I don't, for you folks, go ahead.
What can you tell me about the, the Mills School? I mean, there, there was some talk about...
I think it's functional. I think it works. I don't think anything has come up that said replacing that will be better by spending $15 million on a new building, that we'll be better off. I think that kids who live in their neighborhood can walk to it safely. I think folks in, in Sandusky who, and it's obviously successful, so its location isn't, is not an issue. We can afford it, and I think...
Is there enough land there to, to expand? I mean, to put in some tennis courts, or?
Why would you, why is it necessary? I would ask you, is it necessary to put tennis courts next to Mills School?
I don't know, but I'm just...
Yeah, no, no. What I'm saying is, in terms of use of the land, there's not, you probably could put some tennis courts there. I don't think it's big enough to put in what's been decided here. But I don't think there's any reason that the tennis courts have to be in conjunction with Mills School.
Could, could I interrupt?
Yeah, jump in, please.
I think relative to Mills School, Mr. Hastings, maybe you can clarify, there's some issues with the school, why we couldn't go into that building? Is that true?
I am not going to address that legal opinion in public.
Okay.
That's a subject for executive session.
But there may be some extenuating circumstances as to why we can't use Mills School.
Could we, yeah, I, I understand which one, I know where you're going because I understand that.
Well, I...
The question is, are we going to get kicked out of Mills School? That, that's relevant. Are we going to not be able to continue our relationship there as it is? Is that beyond what you want to talk about? See, that, that makes a difference. The fact that, do we have some limitations in Mills School, you perhaps could not but do some, build tennis courts, doesn't mean we're not going to be able to do what we're doing.
Mr. Poole, Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm basically getting confused about this whole thing because I, I thought this first agenda was about zoning and not necessarily about the need for the recreation center. So if, if we're going to be debating about the need for the recreation center, I'm sure everyone on this panel needs more information about the need for a rec center, which I don't know if they're prepared to give their thoughts about the need for a rec center because I don't know if there's been study on that particular subject versus what, you know, what the, the agenda is about the rezoning of that particular property. That's, that's all I had to say.
Actually, I totally agree with you, and that's what I said at the beginning, this, we moved this way because they brought it up, the rec center, and then somebody asked me questions about it, but yes, absolutely. Zoning is what this is about.
Yes.
And I, and I've said what I said. And the only way recreation ties into it is whether or not after you rezonate, it is, it is a matter for you folks to decide whether or not the use of this land is going to be of value to the community because that's really what your, your, I believe your mandate is. So that's how recreation ties into it. You are changing it from something, manufacturing that could be good for the community, and saying that turning it into this will be better. So that answer your question, Mr. Jackson, about whether or not the rec center should be...
One more question.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Well, this is not, this is not so much a question as offering my opinion, yeah.
Okay.
On some of the questions that have been asked, I would like to give my viewpoint of it. And I also want to thank Mr. Poole for, he, he challenges things, and I think that's useful, and I, I don't want to get too distracted by debating Wes. I can go on kind of indefinitely.
Yeah.
But as it relates to, is there a demand for a rec center? I will confess to being unfettered by any special knowledge. What I want to speak to is what we're asked to consider, the rezoning of that property, and I would look back to... And I would look back to the planning documents that the city paid quite a bit of money for in deciding what goes where. And this, this has been a process that's taken, in my recollection, many years to get to this point. Now, I don't wanna start too far back. I will just generally aver that, as a longtime member of the YMCA, I'm not sure that the failure of the Y was as a result of a lack of demand or whatever. The people who were using it were very bereft by the loss of that facility, and many had no alternative. But in my recollection, as a board member, what happened to that campaign was kind of a diversion of assets, a split in assets, because the main proponents of a better, more efficient YMCA with a pool that was affordable to operate and in good mechanical repair, those same people, in my recollection, also behind building a new pool at Sandusky High School. And that pool plan that defeated the Y was much grander than the pool plan that is actually being developed. Then it was gonna be a 10-lane pool with a warm-up pool, and then another pool for community use that would replace the function of the YMCA. That promise was not delivered on. And now, what's wrong with the tennis courts where they are? Well, they did expand into the parking lot, reduced the parking lot, and I think there's always been demand for more athletic fields that are immediately adjacent to the high school, where they can take advantage of the locker room facilities and all that kind of stuff, instead of trooping out to Venice Heights to practice soccer or doing those sorts of things. So, I wanna direct you back to that planning document that, in my recollection, envisioned Route 4 to be a new entrance, grand entrance to the city. And it is punctuated by education and medical treatment and recreation because of the high school and those facilities. We have Kinnick Stadium, not Kinnick Stadium, the Strobel Field, a major, major facility. Goes back to WPA. I mean, when we were looking at the south side and what businesses and what could attract people and stuff, that is like a centerpiece of that part of town. Before I, before I lose the point, if they had found some light manufacturer that wanted to build there, that would have happened long ago. The fact that there is unused space in dedicated built city TIF facilities for an industrial park on the west side that has never really taken off, well, when I worked for a local light manufacturer, and that facility was considering where to move, where to build, being in this part of town is not easy to get your big trucks in and out, and doesn't really appeal to the image of the city that we're trying to cultivate with the high school and, and then a hospital, and then across the street, other medical facilities, drug treatment, nursing homes, all that corridor broken up, holding a spot for something that may happen in the next four years, pretty scary concept to me. I think it's appropriately rezoned, and if I want, if I had a light manufacturer to bring in, I think I would try to find them a better place that is not so easy to bicycle to, is not so central to the school, that doesn't have the adjacency benefits of being so close to the school. I mean, to me, zoning wise, the zoning question seems very appropriate, and hence why I was concerned by the light manufacturing left behind it, snaking those trucks in around it. Which is the wave of the future, I ask you folks? What do you think? Is the light manufacturing gonna come back? Are we gonna build up Sandusky with manufacturing? Or are we gonna be kind of a service industry in a place where tourists go? Last comment. It's the classic, I come from Iowa, the field of dreams. If you don't build it, there won't be any demand for it. I mean, there's nobody gonna go there if it's not there. If you build it, I think maybe we can find the people who are currently disenfranchised by Planet Fitness and find it inconvenient to get to sports horse. I think there, particularly seniors, is who I think really resonated in the surveys about, about having a rec center. And at the time, there was like some blue-ribbon commissioner or something, whoa, what's the scope of services? We're gonna, a lot of people were involved with a lot of time in that, and it sort of degenerated into a he said, she said about, are the kids being served and who is this for? Seemed like there was a lot of people very interested in it at that point. And so, again, I'm unfettered by knowledge, I just offer my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think you summed it up well. And probably the only person up here that holds you being from Iowa, holds it against you being from Iowa is me. But anyhow, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Miller said. I would say to you, Mr. Poole, how long has that site been vacant?
Multiple years.
Years and years and years.
2017, 2019, they tore down, 19, I think they tore down 19...
If it was such a hot site, somebody would've come in and taken that site already.
Consider how long the property on Perkins Avenue Strip Road has been empty, that now has redwood...
Well, let me say, I would make the comparison with the Keller Building.
Okay.
How many years did we, did we parlay tearing the Keller Building down? Because everybody said the sky is gonna fall if we tear it down. We can't do that to this historic building. We tore it down, and we've got development, things have worked out fine.
Yes, I...
I think we're here to consider the change of use, and that's what we should consider.
I agree. And I only brought this forward for you folks to consider it, and I just appreciate that you step forward and say what you think and why, and whatever you vote on is perfectly fine. I wanted to put that in, this into the conversation. I think the frontage on Rockwell Street could just as easily have been 10 new homes. This is the point about zoning, the things you could do, and things that are not brought to the table by, by the politicians and the staff is just left out. I only brought this for you folks to listen to, and you decide, you decide otherwise, that's fine too.
And you made a very cogent argument.
That's fine too.
I guess, I guess my last comment would be, working with the schools would've been great, but that should've been done years ago. And you were a commissioner.
Is it too late? Yeah, I know.
You were a commissioner, I mean, you could've pushed that during the time.
I didn't have the votes, just like I don't now.
Well, I mean, well, anyhow, I don't wanna debate, I don't wanna debate.
But thank you, no, it's not a debate, and whatever you guys do is fine. I put it on the table for you to hear.
Before we move on, I wanna say, I am a supporter of a recreational facility for kids in Sandusky. I think that is a good idea. What we got going over at Mills is working to some extent. I do wanna say that there was a lot of merit to two of the things that Mr. Poole said there. And one, the vote was no mandate. I mean, it was very close and not, not a high percentage of people live in this town that voted on it. And I didn't see anything on that that I don't think could be done cheaper at Mills. But, that is not us. I do hope that the city commission and the staff that are working on this, we haven't broke ground. Things can change, decisions can be made, but if the plan is to go forward with building it here, it is an acceptable, public facilities is an acceptable use of that property. If a manufacturer was wanting to move in, it would also be an acceptable use of the property, and I'd approve either one.
Sure.
So, I will vote for it, but I do hope that those still deciding are considering options.
And just last comment on my behalf, if those around the table that feel that way, Mr. Poole, when it comes to the commission, you can come back and speak your piece.
Do you like a reply? Chairman, just, I have a question.
I'll wait for the commission meeting. Mr. McGory.
I have a question. So, as a citizen, I may have missed something, but has, has a final decision been made to move forward with the project at this location?
I think, yeah, I think that ship has sailed, although, you know, we are, we are, we bid it out to an architect to cost it out and everything. I would imagine that, that has to come back to the commission, and at that point, maybe if there's enough interest in the cost being too much or some objections, maybe, maybe there could be a change.
So, we are here just on the issue of zoning, and we could go back and forth on zoning. I mean, if we approve the change today, if it turns out that this project did not go forward, and something, a light manufacturing proposal came forward, we could change it back again theoretically.
That's a, I'll defer to Ms. Blair on that.
That is a possibility, it's a city-owned site, and the planning commission makes recommendations for zoning.
Okay. So, I mean, I'd like to change zoning based on a firm project.
Yes.
And I don't know that this is a firm project, but again, we're only here just on the issue of zoning, so.
I would suggest it's pretty firm.
Okay.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg thing. My understanding of the sequence of how we got here is, well, in order to proceed with any planning, more specific costing, design, status, they have to have a site that they're designing to. So, they need to have some bounded property that they're dealing with in order to spend the money to do the study, to find out, make the, the plan real, and to have a plan that can be voted up or down, because this is just concepts we're talking about now. And you can't spend money if you don't have a place where, well, if it did go, then we're gonna talk about zoning.
Right.
I mean, it's just sequential.
Okay.
Okay. I guess...
That clarifies things for me, in my mind, so.
Thank you, Mr. McGory, Mr. Miller, and just one last comment, and then I'll call for the vote. I think one of the other things is, is the city owns that site, so that lowers the cost, because we own the property, right? So, we can throw the property into the project, and that lowers the cost somewhat, rather than going out and having to pay for a site. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Ramble.
I didn't catch a motion.
Oh. Is there, is there a motion to approve this zoning map amendment?
At the, at the risk of doing a mic-sulaf, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Would you call the roll, Ms. Ramble?
David Miller?
Yes.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
Yes.
Steve Pagali?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll move into new business. The zoning code amendment for manufactured homes' design criteria, I think we talked about this at a meeting before, but is that Mr. Oaks or Ms. Blair?
I'm gonna pass the torch to Ms. Blair for this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Got it. So, you'll have in your packet a memorandum of information about this. So, we had this conversation in the December meeting about the proposal to initiate a change in the zoning code. This is chapter 1147, section 1147.02, to update the manufactured homes' design criteria minimum standards for the front elevation of new homes. And if you recall, in the conversation that we brought to you, we gave you an overview of what those design standards look like in the code today. And there was a discussion about front elevation and how to phrase what we would require on a front elevation, and then roofing material. The planning commission asked us to update the roofing material. So, we did a little bit more research on these. We brought two, so that we brought the, the next page from the memo, mentions those two updates, so it would be in two different sections, section D and item H, roofing material and front elevation. And the front elevation reads that the primary front entrance shall be not located on a side or rear elevation. The front facade shall include at least one window and a prominent front entryway and door, with architectural features customarily found on the front of a building, such as awnings, cornice work, edge detailing, or decorative finish materials. Front porches are encouraged, but not required. In roofing material, the change allows metal and specifies metal roofing material must be high quality, such as standing seam and not corrugated metal. In the research, I found corrugated metal. If you picture like a barn roof in the country that's real thin, and there's, you know, maybe some rusty holes in it, I think that's why metal was not originally allowed, would be my assumption, because it was a very common and cheap roofing material. So, the definition here would not allow for that, but would allow standing seam roofs and other more modern roofing material that you had brought to the table in our discussion. These changes got sent out to staff leadership, the city manager, and the law department, and no comments or concerns were expressed. So, from our perspective in the planning division, this is ready for a motion to approve from planning commission, and we would certainly entertain any questions or edits that you would suggest moving forward. But this is the proposal for, we recommend that planning commission make a motion to recommend city commission adopt the proposed amendment to chapter 1147, manufactured homes' section 1147.02, design criteria, to allow metal roofing material and require the primary front entrance be located on a front elevation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson?
Has there been, I know we had a thing about, a few months ago, where out here at Corso's on Cleveland Road, they were gonna be bringing in some tiny homes type things. And I guess out on Venice Road, I guess they're bringing in some, some modular homes too. Was that the need to try to change the requirements for manufactured homes?
The primary prompt for this conversation was the home that was placed on Meg Street. We brought pictures of that last time.
Yeah. The lot was too small to turn the house.
So, they, yeah, they turned it sideways, and it could have been just a blank wall facing Meg Street. So, this would, would make sure that a home placed in any of those zoning districts that do allow manufactured homes be facing the front and facing the street.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, I think you're next, and then Mr. McGory.
Ms. Blair, I appreciate getting this back, and I think it does a pretty good job of, of what we were looking for. And out of all this, there's only one word, just one word, I wanna quibble about, and maybe it's just the delightful ambiguity of the English language, but the word "primary" front door. I'm not sure what that means. Does that mean as compared to secondary front doors? Or the entrance that is most likely used, primary entrance to be used? Because I can think of lots and lots, most people maybe don't use the front door as their primary entrance, so is it the primary door? I can see the language used later on, a prominent front door, so you look at it, you see that's a front door, but it doesn't really address, well, what if you had multiple front doors? Or a building that was big enough to have two units in it, like a duplex where you have two front doors, but everybody goes in the back anyway, 'cause they park their car in the back, and that's the quickest, easiest way in. I think the word "primary" maybe just could be deleted, and it'd be, make more sense to me. The front entrance shall not be located on the side. As I think about that house that's on Meg Street, and you look at it, and based on my experience with pre-manufactured homes, again, unfettered by knowledge, I think it's designed that the front entrance is on the side, and there's no way in their zoning, it talks about the width of the lot and the frontage of the lot, those pre-manufactured homes have to kinda go like a trailer in a trailer park in a way. And that facade, that could be a blank facade, well, could it also just have a faux window that looks very prominent from the front and a faux primary entrance? Because then it will look right, even though the other... Because then it will look right, even though the other side of that wall is the bedroom, you know? On the other side of that wall is the laundry room or the kitchen. It's not, you know, how you design a house to go in it from that side. So you make it look like, oh, that's front entrance, applies with code, and you drive to the back and go in the back door like everybody else.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oaks.
It's my opinion, the language is written as such. The one example that pops in my head is if there's an attached garage, and there's an entry door to the garage that's also attached to the house, you now could have two doorways, so the primary door would be the front door to the main house itself, not to the garage. I could see, I'm not accusing, but I could see in a real-world scenario that that secondary door, if that language isn't as such, could be interpreted as the primary door to the house, which is technically to the garage, if that's not written as such.
I mean, I know a lot of old people that only go in and out of their house through the garage nowadays because it's not safe to walk out on the sidewalk, you know? You get in their car in the garage, and you drive out, and it doesn't really matter because you're old and you might slip.
So just for my clarification, Mr. Oaks, would you be suggesting that maybe we should take "primary" out and just leave "front door"?
Mr. Chairman, I would leave "primary." In the instance that there are two doors facing the public right-of-way, as the example I just gave, if it's connected to a garage and the house at the same time but not a primary front door to the residence, that could be a loophole for people to use. I fear that removing the "primary" word could be interpreted as such.
But prominent is still in there. A prominent front door is still in there.
Yeah. They could put a prominent door to the garage, and that would then cover that part of the language.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGory.
So this code section applies only to manufactured homes, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So if someone wanted to build a house with the main door, I'll call it the main entrance door on the side, and let's say had a driveway up along the side, and part of the problem is the downtown lots are so small to take a house that's not necessarily manufactured for that lot. But I could see the house we're talking about, if that had landscaping across the front and a little garden area right inside there, that you could have that be a side. Now, do you like a flat wall with no lattice work or something that would break it up? But I understand, basically, that's not an attractive house in that location, and it's essentially a manufactured ranch house that the side of it is really the front. But I know we're struggling to say we don't want unattractive construction or manufactured ones to be built that way, but I think, I don't know, I don't have a problem with not having a front door on the, the main door on the front, but I don't know how you deal with it. It's just you don't want an unattractive slab wall there 20 feet back or 30 feet back from the sidewalk with no landscaping. And so, yeah, it was, okay, well, stick a deck on it. It's not even that attractive of a deck. I mean, it looks like a dock, and I don't know that sticking a front, a primary door is gonna make the whole thing look any better. It's gonna break up the wall, but you could do the same thing with lattice work, and so it's just hard to take a saltbox house and make it attractive without landscaping and everything. So I totally agree with the goal here. I just don't, we're struggling, I don't know, we're struggling to try to be reasonable, and I don't know how, without telling somebody you got an ugly house.
Ms. Blair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one comment, just kind of building from a few things that have been mentioned. We expect manufactured homes to become more popular. There's some state language out there that even asks cities to incentivize manufactured homes in cities, and I think for a long time, they were designed to be wider and fit on wider lots. And clearly, the example we've been looking at is a home that was designed for a wider lot and was flipped sideways. So now the bedroom is up close to the street where they're gonna hear all the car traffic and people walking by, which is really not a great place to live. In my opinion, I wouldn't want my bedroom to be right there. I'd rather have my living room be right at the front. But there are manufacturers out there that are gonna be building homes that will fit on lots that, like Sandusky's, on 33-foot lots. And there's options out there right now. You'll see in the Welcome Home program that staff is working with, in community development, to build new homes. They're all manufactured homes. They're all gonna have the front doors facing the street and look more like the neighboring houses and fit in with the neighborhoods. So really, what we would expect this kind of requirement to do is not necessarily, it could end up in the result of somebody buying one of those homes, flipping it sideways, and adding a front door with the house number and everything on the front. But I think it's more likely to just drive those customers to a company that provides a home that fits appropriately on the lots that we have in the city.
Is there the ability to seek a variance in a given situation? I mean, if this were enacted, is it possible to say, here's my design, and I know you don't want it to be unattractive, here's what I'm gonna do, I would do differently? Is there?
I mean, it certainly would fall within the variance process if an applicant or if an individual owner wanted to do something that is not within the zoning code, then the variance process exists for that reason.
Mr. Miller.
Connor's...
Have you already went once or no? Mr. Whalen, go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Miller.
I'm gonna be a no either way on this. It feels reactive. I don't, I'm not convinced that there's a need that we must legislate something to change this. I'm not convinced that this is the best legislation to address it. Like you said, I think honestly, the window, the door on the side with the tall bushes in front of the house probably would've looked better in that case, and that doesn't address this. I would be surprised, I guess I wouldn't be surprised if the rest of you guys pass it without me. I would suggest, looking at the metal part, it says high-quality roofing materials that must be standing seam. I mean, I can tell you that I would, there's a lot of metal roofs in this town, not, still mostly shingles, but there's a lot of metal roofs, and I would say more than half of them are exposed fastener metal roofs that do not meet the standing seam requirement. So I would consider taking that part out if you were gonna pass it, but I'm a no either way.
Mr. Miller.
The front door issue notwithstanding, I think it was me in particular who was concerned about legislation that banned metal roofing, which is, I think, the coming thing for a lot of places. And the specificity of whether, how they're lapped or whatever is, again, not my area of expertise. I did note that you can't have metal siding. I thought, geez, is aluminum siding on a house now so unaffordable that only vinyl siding is acceptable? I find my vinyl siding like UV-degradated and becomes fragile over years, and the aluminum siding, I remember from years ago, lasted a long time. You might even lose the anodization and have to paint your aluminum siding, but it lasted a long time. I don't know why aluminum siding is...
I noticed that, but it specifically says the city engineer can approve it if it meets the intent of the zoning code, so if there's a way to make that happen without a...
That, and does anybody even do aluminum siding?
I don't know if it's affordable. I think it's too expensive. It's too expensive.
I will mention standing seam is in there just as an example. That's why it says "such as." That's just one type of metal roofing. It was specifically a call-out, not corrugated metal, which is the thin, you know, metal you put on a shed out in the country.
The corrugated that I remember from being a little farm boy and tacking it up around the skirt of my trailer, that was heavy material, and it got recycled and recycled, and it was galvanized steel. And it was heavy duty, but maybe that's not affordable anymore. Maybe that product isn't available anymore. The comment I wanted to make, though, is about, I see manufactured homes as the most cost-effective solution as compared to stick-built homes for economical homes, which everybody is kinda clamoring for, smaller, affordable houses. And the South Side seems to be a great opportunity for infill of affordable homes. And that's kind of the market area that I would see this regulation fitting in, is all those places on the South Side where locks are not full anymore, houses are missing here and there everywhere, and to re-house some of that vacant property, infill lots, that seems like the most affordable way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments? I do agree with Ms. Blair. I think we're going to see a lot more of this type of housing come into the community, into all the communities, because there's a lot of money out there now. And if you're gonna build it affordable, you have to build it smaller, and you have to go out into these manufactured-type homes. So if we're going to get in front of this, we should probably get in front of it. Now, if this group doesn't feel it's quite right yet, then maybe we ought to send it back and have some comments on how we would like things changed, but I think we better move on it sooner or later, sooner than later.
Well, if we vote it down, it could come back, and if Connor's predictive that he's gonna be outvoted.
Yes. So is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, I'll...
I'm gonna just...
Mr. McGory.
I'm struggling with this. I totally agree with the goal. Part of the problem is that the house across from the city building is just sticking a subdivision manufactured ranch house in an area on a small lot with two-story older, older 1940s houses or 30s houses or 20s houses, and it just doesn't fit unless you do a lot of work, and maybe they will do it, but it hasn't been done yet. But I'm just concerned of making legislation that applies to everything, and I guess there's an exception there, that the city engineer can make some variances, but I don't know. I'm just not comfortable yet personally with the way this is right now. But I totally agree that we do need to get ahead of it. I don't know.
Would you be happy, or if it had little tighter restrictions as far as going along with the type of architecture in the community?
Well, and yes, and I don't know how you, I...
How you would phrase that.
Wrap my head around that. And what was said about the South Side, those are smaller houses, and some of those, I mean, the house that's across from the city building would fit perfectly in the South Side where some of those single-floor, almost longer houses, I mean, it would fit there, whether it was sideways with the door on the side and a driveway up or whatever. Again, you don't like a slab wall, but once you get landscaping up, it breaks it up. So I don't know. I'm not comfortable with the current legislation, but I'm comfortable with the goal, so.
Thank you, Mr. McGory. I'll call for the vote. Ms. Ramble.
Steve Pagalli?
Yes.
Pete McGory?
No.
Connor Whalen?
No.
Jim Jackson?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, is there, in lieu of Mr. Zuloff's absence, is there, are there any updates?
I did not prepare any additional updates.
I think we've had a lot of discussion, spirited discussion tonight, and I appreciate that. So if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
It moves?
I'll second.
All right. We stand adjourned.
Mr. Chairman?